Welcome Canyon City Planning Commission, Wednesday, February 23rd. I now call this meeting to order. I suppose we'll skip the Pledge of Allegiance if that's okay with everyone for today. Denise, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Good evening. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss? Commissioner Suther?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thanks Denise. So we have a quorum, correct?
Correct.
Okay. This time I now ask for approval of the minutes from the January 26th, 2022 regular meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments about our minutes from our last meeting? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion, please, in a second to approve?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
This is Gary Clark.
Go ahead, Gary.
Gary, you're on.
I was just seconding the motion.
Do we have a first?
I'd made a motion.
Okay. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Suther?
Hi.
Commissioner Clark?
Hi.
Chairman Maloney?
Hi.
Commissioner Clement?
Hi.
Commissioner Ladue?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Item 4A, formal ranch planning area C5, we're going to continue this to next week, March 2nd, which seems to be a special meeting for the just that one agenda item, is that right, Patrick?
It will be a special meeting for just that one item. We did get the documents we were waiting for, they arrived late last week and it was too late for me to get a staff report written. In fact, I spent the better part of today writing that staff report. It's approaching 10 pages right now, so you will have a reading assignment this weekend, I'm afraid.
Okay. Can we just get everyone to say, yes, we don't have, we don't need a motion, but just everyone to agree to moving that to next week?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Randy says yes.
Okay.
Very.
Everyone else is nodding. Yes. Okay.
Yes.
That's enough yeses, I think we're good. I wish I can get my camera to work, I don't know what's going on, but anyway. All right, item 4B. An ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code. Am I on the right item here? Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Concerning the addition there to new subsections I and J of Section 17 dot 05 dot 150, concerning temporary shelters. Applicants are the city of Canyon City. Location is applicability to all of the incorporated Canyon City. I now open this public hearing, the provisions of the city municipal code, in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Certainly. So, Mr. Chairman, I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation for this evening. What I wanted to do was have a conversation with Planning Commission about this draft ordinance. This ordinance create a, creates pathways for two kinds of uses pertaining to homelessness or addressing homelessness in the community. One creates what's known as an SOS or outdoor shelter, safe outdoor space. The other creates what's known as an overnight shelter. Currently, in the Canyon City Municipal Code, there is no provision that would allow for urban camping. And this, of course, excludes, you know, kids that want to pitch a tent in the backyard of the family house and, you know, have some friends over and spend the night in the backyard. We're talking about actual urban camping, there is no provision that allows for that currently. The, uh, the, the temporary shelter or safe outdoor space would create a pathway that would allow for that to happen with some structure provided to it. Overnight shelters, on the other hand, would be more for use by an organization, for example, loaves and fishes that could take in homeless people overnight during inclement weather situations. The, the primary difference between the two is that overnight shelters would typically have some sort of a staff component or someone there that could oversee management of the facility, whereas the temporary shelter would not. Commissioner Clement has actually been connected to a local coalition of groups that have been operating a temporary shelter and have some experience in this. And one of the things that the city noticed was, well, okay, we really kind of need to create a pathway if this is going to happen. So the ordinance that you have before you is modeled off of a similar ordinance that was done in Denver. And obviously, there's a big difference between Denver and Canyon City if you're talking about resources and municipal budget to operate such a facility. But nevertheless, the, the ordinance that you have before you is the draft we are proposing. We'd like to have a conversation with Planning Commission about this. Hear your thoughts, and then if you see fit to make changes or pass the ordinance, can then go on and we can have this, a similar conversation with council.
Hey, thanks, Patrick. We'll start with questions of staff.
Well, you can't see us raise our hand, can you, Jerry?
No, I can see everyone, I just, you can't see me, so.
Oh, okay, well, that's fine.
Go ahead, Randy.
I do have a question. You mentioned budgetary municipal, so who would be funding each of these, the temporary and the, the overnight shelters? Is that, does that come out of the city's budget? Or who pays for it, basically?
Well, let's just say that that's undetermined at this point in time. It, I mean, the, the city might be asked to do this, it might be a coalition of local organizations that get asked to do this. The principal difference between the two is that the overnight shelter would have some regular staffing associated with it and it would usually be done by a local organization, whereas the safe outdoor space probably would not. To the extent that there's going to be any supervision, there's going to have to be some conversations that would happen about who's going to do that. I'd like to open the, the floor to Commissioner Clement because she's got a lot of experience, but there's more experience, in fact, than I have.
So, DeeDee, I'll ask you. The temporary shelters, obviously a temporary, overnight, whatever, portable drinking water, waste receptacles, access to hand washing, shower facilities, laundry facilities and all that. Do you know who might pay for this or who might fund it? The overnight shelters or might be something like loaves and fishes, correct? I just don't know where the overnight or the temporary shelters, where they'd be located and who would pay, basically?
Yeah. So, I, I can tell you what I, what I know. So, the, um, the temporary shelters would actually be outside shelters. There's currently a test going on on Justice Center Road between the Mountain View Church and Department of Human Services. There's a, a mini SOS camp that's happening there right now, it's just being used as a test. The overnight shelter would be, for example, churches. So sometimes in the middle of winter, there are churches who will say, I would like to open up our church and take overflow. So they would have someone, it may not be a paid staff, but they would definitely have a volunteer that would be inside the church and they would be awake while people are sleeping. So, and that's kind of the big difference. And Patrick, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the temporary shelter would be outside. The overnight cold weather shelter potentially would be inside at a church for overflow. Is that?
That, that is correct. The, the sample or the test case scenario that, that Commissioner Clement mentioned is actually happening on a portion of unbuilt right of way where Justice Center intersects, I think it's Independence Street. Is that the, the correct name of it?
Yep.
Independence Road, I guess. This is on an unbuilt portion of right of way. And, and the city's been allowing this use even though, for all intensive purposes, at the moment, we don't have a pathway regulator, regulatorily that would permit this to happen. So we're trying to create such a pathway with this ordinance. That, there've been some, some pros and cons associated with the safe outdoor space. I was in a meeting last month, in fact, that Commissioner Clement shared, where this was discussed kind of at length, that the various pros and cons associated with it. I think there are things that could probably be done better out there. I think Commissioner Clement would agree with that. But we probably need to have a structure in place that effectively allows for this. If it's going to be something we do annually, you know, during the winter months.
And then to Commissioner Smith's question about who pays for it. So, right now, it's actually, the costs are being shared. There's a porta potty over there that Department of Human Services is paying for. There is a dumpster there that loaves and fishes is paying for. There are case managers from various service providers that are going over there to, to connect with the individuals that are staying there. There are churches involved with helping prepare meals and providing like lunchtime meals and weekend meals and things like that. So it really truly is a community collaboration. I think one of the things, as this ordinance mentions, going forward, they're actually, the goal would be is that there would be an agency or someone that would sign up and say, hey, I'm going to be responsible for this. And then they would create memorandums of understanding with various other community members. So everyone understands their role. Right now, it's, it's just, it's, it's just collaboration that's happening, good collaboration that's happening to make it possible.
We're just kind of in the planning stages right now, so we're on. I think, for the most part, we're talking more or less on the east side of Canyon. Is there any plan for the west side? Because there are obviously homeless people on the west side as well, that I personally noticed. So, is there any? Sorry, getting dinged a lot now. Is there, uh, any location that is planned as far as strategically putting these, these temporary shelters in place?
So, I, I think the point of the ordinance is to allow for this to happen.
Okay, all right, so this is, we're still in the planning stages, so.
If you're asking, are there plans to actually physically locate some sort of a, a safe outdoor space in the western part of Canyon City? At the moment, I would say probably not. I think the logic behind where it's situated right now on Independence Road is that there happens to be a preponderance of homeless in there because you've got some, you've got a bridge that's going over Highway 50. You've got some, some floodways that are happening around there and those tend to be popular spots for the homeless to to, to gather. So, right now, we're, the, I, I guess the location of the, the, the safe outdoor space is happening just because we've noticed that's where a need exists and we've got the ability to at least put something up on a piece of ground that isn't being used for anything else at the moment.
Okay.
Thank Commissioner Maloney, you'll, you'll be pleased to know you're, you're now on video, we can see you.
Yeah, I switched over to my iPad, which is even harder to use for me, so bear with me. Any other questions? Brian?
Yeah, I guess the, you know, I guess it's, it's section five that, you know, it's a permit must submit standard operating procedures that contain the following and it's a list of a, a lot of lists and descriptions and, you know, plan for this, plan for that. What's, I mean, do we have specific criteria for those items? And who reviews those items and who approves those items?
So, I, I don't know that we have a specific set of criteria that we're going to evaluate the requests on. It'll be up to the city administrator as to who is doing the review. He, he will probably specifically assign staff or a group of staff members to review the applications as they come in. As I said, this is new ground for all of us, so I don't know that I've got ready answers to all of those questions yet.
Well, Patrick, this is Gary. Somewhere in the back of my mind, I see, wouldn't we want to have that set of criteria developed before we kick this in motion?
Well, that's a chicken and egg question. Right now, we don't have a pathway to allow it. And, and we are, in fact, allowing it anyway. So, it's sort of, okay, do we create the pathway to allow it since it's already happening? And then backfill that with the, um, the criteria? Or do we create the criteria and while that's going on, not have the pathway? Right now, having the ordinance was the easier thing to draft.
Okay.
It just seems with the ordinance is fine, but it was like Gary was kind of alluding to, there's no point person and, and there's no funding other than, I guess charitable donations and people who want to promote it. Yeah, you said chicken and the egg, I, I don't know which one would be better, I just don't want to get us into a situation of approving something and then, then we have to backfill with money somehow. And I'm sure the money is going, since it's municipal, it's going to come out taxes.
Well, we don't know that it's going to be a municipal function. It's not going to be, we don't know for certain that the city is going to be the one running the safe outdoor shelter. It could very well be that a coalition of local groups take on the responsibility to, to oversee and manage the safe outdoor shelter, which is what's occurring with the one we've got now in Independence Road.
Okay. Right. I mean, another scenario could be is there is a church somewhere that has property and they are, would consider creating an SOS and they would be responsible for the costs and things like that. So, I, I think to Patrick's point, that the idea is, is that this is not allowed at all. And if this is something that our community wants to do, provide safe outdoor spaces or even provide additional shelter beds, like I said, with churches in, during the cold weather months, we need to have an ordinance. Right now, we don't have an ordinance and so this just kind of helps us move towards that. Yeah.
So essentially, this is the blueprint that we're going to be following no matter who takes it under their wing, I guess.
Absolutely.
So we're going to have this in place, just in case somebody from somewhere says this is what we want to do. Okay, I understand that, I just, I said, I didn't want to back us into a corner here.
Right. So, so Patrick, I just had some questions about the ordinance itself, just some, some things that are written out. And so, on paragraph four, where, or I, yeah, number four, where it says, A, portable drinking water on site. And so, I'm just wondering, the other ones that we said, access to laundry service, access to medical services. I'm wondering if we can just change that to access to drinking water. One of the, the challenges is, is in the cold weather, it's keeping, you know, water bottles freeze when you put water bottles out there. If you have a water buffalo or some type of tank, they freeze. And so, if there's just a way that we just make sure that there's access to water, so people have water.
We can, we can make that change. In fact, if, if so desired, you could make that as part of your motion, if you want, if you were so inclined.
Okay. All right, and then I guess the other one that I wanted to just mention was, even like with the hand washing stations, you have the same problem. And so, what's, what is being used is just like wet ones and things like that, that people, people who camp have these types of things with them. And so, these would just be made available, it's not necessarily having that water there on site that could freeze or, or whatever.
Sure, no, I, I mean, I think the language is effectively, access to hand washing stations. And if we removed onsite and just put hand washing stations in a close proximity to the site, the, the hand washing stations are something that could, you know, could be the, the gel, the, the, the wet wipes, anything like that, doesn't necessarily have to be water.
Okay.
Well, hey, Patrick, this is Gary. I, I'm looking at this at a different angle. I agree with her on, you know, potentially having water bottles and stuff out there and freeze. But technically, when you get right down to the cutting of it, this is going to be an authorized homeless campground. We don't have campgrounds that don't have access to toilets and water. And the proximity of that is what's important. If we just said it was accessible, is it a half a mile down the road? And is that going to be something someone's going to do in the wintertime? And the answer is that's probably not, which gets back to the whole winter thing. So I would have an issue with the phrasing of access. We have in this, within a thousand feet for some of these things, like shower facility. I would say we raft something like that into it.
But if you want to add specificity, that would be a good way to do it. In an earlier draft of this, it was specified a certain number of feet for some of these, and that got removed. And I, I'm not quite certain why.
Well, again, that, my concern would be, again, we, um, we're basically authorizing a homeless campground. And I don't have a heartburn with that because people have to live somewhere and we're running into this problem. But to just say accessible, that's a broad term. Florence is accessible from Canyon City when you get right down to it.
No, and, and I would say adding the specificity of a certain dimension, a thousand feet, 500 feet, whatever you think is appropriate, would be a way to add some, some certainty to this. Bear in mind that what this is doing is opening a path so that someone, you know, an organization like a church that may want to operate an outdoor, a, a safe outdoor space, i- if they can meet these criteria and provide us with a plan that would fit, you know, the, the, the management criteria that we're asking for. And again, that has not been drafted yet, but assuming they can, having the specificity of, you know, wa- bathing facilities, hand washing facilities within a certain linear foot distance, I think would add, would add the specificity you're looking for.
Yeah, that's where I was headed.
Um, I have a, I have a quick question, and if you've already explained this, I'm sorry. Four months out of any 12 months on that.
Yeah.
Um, how, how's that going to work?
So, I, the, the, I, I, it'll be the city that keeps track of these facilities when people come in and apply for them. And we will, we will note as part of their application that they're going to have a start date of X and an end date of Y. We'll make sure that it's not more than four months in duration and that they then can't, within one calendar year, operate the same facility again. So that's, that's a records keeping function. Is there a logic behind why four months was chosen? I think the idea is this would encompass the bulk of the winter season. But, a- again, DeeDee may have some, some stronger information about that than I do.
Yeah, um, in, in fact, that was one of my questions. I'm, I'm wondering why there's a time limit on, I, I understand the time limit, I guess, for the, the churches that are providing that, the temporary, what did we call it? The overnight cold weather shelter, that, that makes sense to me. But when we're talking safe outdoor spaces, I don't know why we have a, a four month time limit. It seems like all the effort that's going into making this safe outdoor space, it seems like it would be year round, unless, yeah, in my mind, I don't know why there's a four month. In fact, I would ask that we remove that.
You can, I would recommend that you consider the unintended consequences could be that if one of these safe outdoor spaces gets established and there is no time limit, it could become permanent by virtue of the fact that it just keeps going. That, I mean, that, that's something to consider. You have the, you, you have the discretion to remove the time limit on the safe outdoor shelters, if you'd like. I would just suggest you might want to, you know, consider what that might mean downstream.
Yeah, but the, the point of the safe outdoor space is provide a place where people to, who are homeless can stay. And so, if someone shows up two weeks before the four months is up, then all of a sudden, there's a, you know, we say, oh, sorry, we, we're closing our, our safe outdoor space July 1st. And then, then all those people who are staying there are going to then move somewhere else and we don't have that place. So then that's when they go back to the parks and that's when they go to private landlord or private land and things like that. And this, this, this whole effort is tried to eliminate that. Is that it is a place where they can camp and they won't be harassed and they won't be breaking the laws and it, it doesn't, I don't think there's going to be that much support in our community where this church is going to say, hey, I'll take the first four months and then this church is going to say, I'll take the second quarter. I, I just don't see that happening. I, I almost see that we potentially cause more harm, that we're providing this place for people to stay. And then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, sorry, you got to go now. I, I don't know.
They're saying something, as far as overnight shelter, are they designating the shelter is going to close down? Or are they just saying that the homeless person cannot stay in that shelter for four months consecutively? And for the person to move on?
I interpret it as the shelter itself would go away after the four month limit. That, that was how I interpreted the, uh, the draft.
It, it seems like an awful lot of work to open and establish an overnight shelter with all these facilities that we were talking about earlier, as far as potable water, electricity, laundry services and all that. And then after four months, shut it down and move it somewhere else? That, I agree with DeeDee, that seems kind of, wow, it's stupid. So, uh, I can see where you could say, okay, we want to try to get this homeless person back on their feet, maybe move them to something else. Maybe, maybe that's what it means to try to get them back on their feet after four months?
I think the idea, I think the idea is to, to be, to be able to move the, the, the folks who are in these encampments into more permanent situations over time as availability of those more permanent spaces happens. So I don't think the idea is that you're going to have the same group of people living there perpetually.
Well, that's the hope.
That is the hope.
But as far as shutting down the shelter just to, you know, make them move, I don't know if that's viable.
Okay. So what, I have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see the problem as, I don't know what other communities are doing, if they're doing similar things, but we're going to probably attract people to these places. So we're going, then once the people come, because they know, hey, you can, if you're homeless, you can go here and you can have all these facilities and you can have showers and food and water. And then you kick them out after four months, we're going to, we're going to double the problem, triple the problem once that facility shuts down. I, I mean, it's going to happen anyway, we're going to, we're going to attract more homelessness by providing services, which you need to provide the services, but if you provide the services and then you boot them out after four months, you're just, you're not helping the situation.
Okay. So what I have heard so far this evening, as modifications to this ordinance are, you want to establish a specific linear distance such as 1,000 feet from the, the safe outdoor space to locate potable water sources as well as hand washing and, and sanitation facilities. And then you also want to remove the time limit on the safe outdoor spaces so that there is no four month limitation, it would be year round.
Yep. And then I, then I just had a couple more on the, for the overnight shelter for the J, under J. So 4G says a dedicated electrical outlet or So 4G says a dedicated electrical outlet or extension cord with an outlet for each bed. I I I think I'm not, I'm not sure what that, why that would be needed. I mean, we don't even have that in our our emergency shelter. And even in the emergency shelter that we're expanding to, there's outlets available that people who are staying there can can have access to. But each individual doesn't have their own designated, you know, electrical source. And so maybe something to the effect that, you know, electrical sources are available or whatever. And then the H internet connection. Well, I would imagine that many, let's say, churches probably have internet access. But I don't know if we want to necessarily say that you're going to be denied being an out night or an overnight shelter because you cannot provide internet connections to everyone who's staying there during the cold months. So.
Okay, okay. So if if I can frame that into an amendment amending language that you'd like. You want paragraph 4G, electrical outlet or extension cord with an outlet for each bed. I think if I heard correctly, you said you want that to be within a reasonable proximity. Again, probably within 1,000 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. And then for paragraph H, internet connection, your, could you restate what you were, what you were thinking there? I'm not quite sure I got.
Sure. No, I'm just saying it just needs to be removed, just to delete it.
Can you, can you just delete G? Because these are at a minimum. So do you really need G and H there all?
You could delete them if you want. That that's perfectly reasonable. This is why we're having the the discussion with planning commission about.
That's that's why it says as a minimum. And I don't think that you have to have electric electrical outlet as a minimum. So my personal feeling would be delete G and H.
And that's just, is this, I want to clarify just for the.
For paragraph 4G.
Okay, so this is this is for the overnight shelter.
That's what I see. Yes. Overnight shelter, J overnight shelter, 4GH.
If you notice here, okay. So to to recap what we've discussed so far, linear distance of 1,000 feet for potable or access to potable water, hand washing facilities and bathing facilities. No time limit on the safe outdoor spaces on an annual calendar. And then overnight shelter, delete paragraphs 4G and 4H.
I have a question on that, on the overnight part, or the, not the overnight, the temporary. How long can you stay at Loaves and Fishes?
Yeah, so we allow people, generally, they can stay 90 days. There are those that maybe stay a little bit longer if they're pending, like maybe there's a medical issue that they're working at. But there is not a a time that says if you are here, let's just say, six months, then you have to leave. It really is a case by case. But but when people come to our shelter, we will say that, hey, you can maybe stay up here till 90 days.
But why wouldn't we have that kind of guidance built into this?
Well, and and that can, that can be part of the, whatever agency is or church or group is going to put together the the program for that SOS, they can come up and they can say, hey, this is only a 90 day SOS. You can only stay here 90 days or whatever, whatever those criteria is. But for the ordinance, I I don't think we want to say that individuals can only stay here 90 days because we don't know their story. Everyone has a different story.
And and I would, I would offer a concurring opinion. I'm sorry, go ahead, Gary.
Well, I understand we don't know their story, but after 10 months, we're going to know their story.
Well, and and I think the idea is when you, when it comes to the overnight shelter, there's going to be an organization, a church, a community group of some sort. They're going to probably want to impose their own criteria for evaluating how long someone can stay. I think putting that into an ordinance becomes, at that point, a regulatory issue where the city becomes involved. And I'm not certain that's a role the city ought to be playing.
Well, isn't the temporary one we got on city property now?
That's not a city operation.
Okay, but it, but it's not on city property either.
It it's on right of way. It's on municipally owned right of way. We've been allowing it to happen there, but it is not being run and managed and overseen by the city.
I understand that, but that's what this ordinance is about to do, though, technically. We're giving, we're giving guidance for somebody.
We're creating a pathway for someone to be able to operate such a facility.
Correct. So again, we're back to, in my mind, we're going to leave an unlimited timeline for someone to keep revolving a program on a on a plot somewhere and with no limitations unless they decide they want a limitation.
You could always add something in there about how the management plan is going to be evaluated on an annual basis.
Okay.
So I'll put that down as next bullet point.
Dee Dee, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
How do we, I mean, I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic to this problem. But how do we, how do we help the people that we have in our community and make sure that this is a benefit for them? And we don't attract people from other communities? I'm not saying we want to put a wall around Canyon City, but isn't that kind of the point? Is we're trying to help our community? So what, in your opinion, what do you do?
Yeah. So what we can do, again, the the agency or the group that's in doing this, they can say we're only taking Fremont County clients. And people who do this type of work know who those folks are, right? They they would know who people are experiencing homelessness just because of all the work that we've done. We actually know who's experiencing homelessness in our community. And so we can actually just say, if you're coming from Colorado Springs or from wherever, you're not allowed to stay in on our camp. That that's one way of doing it. We had also, the the SOS, wherever it's at, will have a limited number of of spaces available, you know. So it's not like it's just going to be, you know, like hundreds of people. Like the one on Independence Road, we, there's only six tents there. And we're not going to have any more tents there. We may not even have any, well, I'll just leave it. We're not going to, we're not planning on adding any more tents there. And so you just control it by the number of people that are allowed at the SOS.
Okay.
What what I will say is the the folks that are staying at the SOS right now, many of them wouldn't, many of them, you probably have seen on a corner somewhere. If you if you would go over there, you would probably recognize some of their faces. So they probably would not go directly into our emergency shelter just because they're they're they maybe have some past trauma, some other things going on in their life where they are staying outside. And the idea of going into an emergency shelter is 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 something that they just don't want to do. But they would be willing to go and they are willing to go to this SOS site. And what we have found is that when we provide these case management services and 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 the location of it is ideal because we have all those service providers around there. They're able to connect to the their, the service providers are able to make their appointments. They start getting a little bit healthier. And then from there, they actually can transitions. Many of them have transitioned into our emergency shelter. And there are, actually, we just did some numbers, like it's like 47% of the people who have stayed at that SOS site have transitioned into housing. That's that's good stuff. They would not have transitioned into housing if they would not have gone to that SOS site, mainly because they would not have gotten the the documents that are needed to get into an apartment, you know, like ID and social security cards, those types of things. They never would have gotten those things. They wouldn't have addressed maybe their mental health needs or their medical needs or any of those types of things because they were on the other end of town. So it, yeah, it does work. It's, yeah, it does work.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So let let me make a suggestion. I've I've heard several different items in here, such as the linear distance for access to potable water and hand washing facilities, no time limit on the safe outdoor spaces, deleting the paragraphs in 4, paragraph 4, pertaining to internet connection and and power cords or power outlets. And then an annual review of the management plan for any organization that wants to run an SOS or an overnight shelter. Let me suggest that what you do is continue this item to your regular planning commission meeting of March 23rd. And then I can go back and make some some changes to this draft and bring it back to you on the 23rd.
Okay.
Patrick, if if we could, you know, I don't, I don't know that explicit criteria in either the the section fives is necessary, but it does seem like some goals for those plans to meet. You know, give them some outline of, you know, the the impact on the surrounding businesses and residents. What, you know, what does that actually mean? If we have some bullet points of goals that that the plan should actually address, you know, and then behavior within the site, you know, what exactly should that plan be addressing without explicit criteria of, you know, if we exceed 10 police calls? I mean, that kind of stuff doesn't probably belong at this point. But but some, at least a goal of what what we're trying to accomplish.
Establishing goals for the items in paragraph five for both SOS and overnight shelter. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Correct. And Patrick, I I think in my mind, under the temporary shelter, safe outdoor space, number 5F, a list of job retaining and education uses within one half mile of the proposed site. I I think that can be deleted. I think K addresses, it talks about the job training and, you know, case management and all that other employment referrals. Again, just thinking about not on Justice Center Road is if there is a church, will there be a workforce center or something within a half mile away? Chances are probably not. And so that just would eliminate them from maybe starting SOS because they can't meet that need.
Anyone have anything else? Any corrections? Go ahead.
Yeah, one quick question. The overnight deal actually, I think it says it can be in a residential zone. Is is there a reason that we would, we would include like R1 and R2? And, you know, and why not? Why not just limit that to like R3? Any, any reason for that? Presumably, there are some churches in in R2. But a higher density. And and I guess the other question is, does the city currently have an ordinance limiting on, I guess, non-family number, the number of non-family members? Like, I know a bunch of college towns have that, like, you can't have more than, you know.
I believe, I believe it is five unrelated people living within a household constitutes a family under the definition.
Does that conflict with this in any way?
Well, I I'm going to suggest that I think the reason, the the logic behind having R1 and R2 included in this was we do have churches within R1 and R2 zones. Churches are more than likely going to be entities that will open their doors to homeless in these kinds, in these times. And as a church, rather than as a residence, a church, I don't think is going to be bound to having to meet the five unrelated persons as the maximum for their facility. If they were taking up residence within a home, that would be a different matter.
It is, and I guess the the only conflict I would see is if somebody buys a home and then tries to put a facility in in something that that's not a church, you know, but but a home in a neighborhood that that's not, you know, slightly different than a, you know, church, more of a, you know, commercial type building. Yes, it's it's in a low residential zone. But different, you know, if somebody's trying to put this into a typical residential structure, seems like that would still apply. I just, should some of that be clarified here?
I I I guess I would need to know more about the the caution you have. If someone is converting a building that's been historically one use into a different use, they're going to come under scrutiny for things like the parking requirement. They're going to come under scrutiny for things like potentially handicapped accessibility. So I I guess I would need some specifics from you. And maybe you and I can have a conversation offline about this and I can, I can try to work some of your concerns into this. It sounds like what you're worried about is that conversion of use on an existing building from some, from one thing to another. There are implications that go beyond, you know, is the use going to contain, you know, an overnight shelter? I I think the broader question is if it's going from a residential type use to a non-residential type use. There are some broader questions that would need to be answered with that.
Is, and I guess I I would see in in overnight shelter, I, you know, is that not a residential or residential use? You know, how how does it play? So say, somebody buys a well-sized house in an R1 zone, has six bedrooms and they, they're like, great, we're going to do a six bedroom, you know, overnight shelter. It's it's all residential use. I mean, do do they, it's not a change.
Would with the ordinance, the way it's written, the overnight shelter would only be permitted for four months out of the year.
Okay, but for those four months, is that, I mean, and and maybe that limits it enough, non-issue, but.
They, if if they wanted to do this, bear in mind, we're still going to require that they have some sort of a management plan for how they're going to operate the facility. And we we would review what they plan to do, how many, you know, what the, what sort of capacity they're going to have, how they're going to meet all of the various criteria that have been laid out that they would have to meet. And and effect, I think that's going to be a fairly effective weed out process.
And I guess that, you know, back to the original, so is that, that's a city staff review and reading? And is that specifically you or does this, you know, city administrator, does anybody else? And how does that actually function when something like that comes in the door?
So at the, at this point in time, at this point in time, it'll be up to the city administrator to designate staff to review such plans. Maybe that's going to be a committee comprised of the city planner, some representation from the police department, maybe a representative from the fire district, maybe a representative from the building department. So my guess is it's not going to be an individual. It will probably be a committee that evaluates these against these criteria.
Okay, fair enough.
So to recap what I have heard so far, the changes you would like to see incorporated into this ordinance are a linear distance of 1,000 feet for access to potable water and hand washing facilities in addition to bathing facilities. No time limit on safe outdoor spaces per calendar year. Delete paragraphs 4G and 4H for overnight shelter, given that it would be impractical to provide an outlet for everyone and impractical impractical to guarantee internet access. Annual review of management plans for any organization that wishes to run a safe outdoor shelter or an overnight shelter. Establish goals for the items in paragraph five for both SOS and overnight shelter as a a method of evaluating the the management plans. And then delete paragraph 5F as it's redundant. Paragraph 5K covers this adequately. Did I, did I capture all of the points?
You did. Well done.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, well, then I would, I would recommend that what planning commission should do is continue the public hearing on this item to your March 23 regular meeting. And that will give us a chance to redraft the ordinance and bring it back to you.
Okay, Denise, can you just call a vote, a roll for everyone agreeing to move this to next month's regular meeting?
Yes, that helps. Chairman Maloney?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Clement?
Yes.
Commissioner Ladue?
Yes.
Commissioner Suther?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess in the meantime, get with Patrick one on one if there's any more corrections possibly, and then we'll get that approved. Next month, or at least recommend approval next month. I don't think there's anything else on tonight's agenda, Patrick, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I will put in, I will put in a plug however, uh, anyone who wants to have a, a fun time at the theater. Um, Fools will be playing Friday, Saturday and Sunday this weekend at the Rialto Theater in Florence. Um, I, I know at least one planning commission member came and saw us last weekend, um, and I will, I will let him offer his endorsement to CC's fit.
It's very good, but my wife and I went to it and it was, it was very funny, so they did a really nice job, so I'd encourage everybody to try to make it over.
Is there somebody you know that's in it?
Yeah.
Your city planner is in it.
Oh. The count.
Count Ussekhovic.
Yes, that's. It's very good.
Okay.
Maybe we can do a field trip, Patrick, all of us will go.
Okay.
All right, um, well, if there's nothing else, anyone have anything else, announcements? Okay, uh, we'll, we'll do this again next week for that one item that we moved to the March second, first, what is it? March second, so that's next Wednesday, correct?
Hopefully the weather, weather will be better and we can meet in person.
It's gonna be in the sixties next Wednesday.
Good.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.